Live.
Okay, we're live.
Five, four, three, two, one. Councilmember, Councilmember Bowman.
Present.
Councilmember Farrelletto.
Here.
Councilmember Gullumbeck.
Here.
Councilmember Nowakowski.
Here.
Council President Pritchett.
Here, and I apologize, my video is going out without us touching it.
Majority Leader Rivera.
Present.
President Pro Tem Scanlon.
Present.
Councilmember Wingo.
Present.
Councilmember Wyatt.
Here.
Form is present.
From the top.
Item number one, call for special session.
Motion to receive and file.
Second by Councilmember Nowakowski.
Item number two, memorandum of understanding.
Motion to adopt.
Second by Councilmember Scanlon. For the record, this memorandum of understanding that is in the record is a memorandum between the City of Buffalo, the mayor of the City of Buffalo, and the common council with the mayor being the signatory for the city and I have signed for the council. The memorandum of understanding, basically, because we do not, at this time, we have not received stimulus funds that are expected or hoped for in the amount of approximately sixty-five million, and we have not received the money from the Seneca Nation out of the soup. We thought it was important that if by July first, twenty-twenty, it is not received, that it would immediately trigger a weekly meeting with leadership to do among at least three things. I read into the record, although the paperwork is submitted, to determine the need to admit by budget amendment, all are part of the budgeted revenue for the federal disaster relief, which as of June third, twenty-twenty, is estimated to be sixty-five million, over sixty-five million dollars, the exact number is there. Number two, for the mayor to keep the council informed, and this is a part of the weekly meeting, informed of changes in the situation with arbitrators award payment from the Seneca Nation in fiscal year twenty-twenty-one and federal aid payments. Three, to present a contingency financial plan for the council's review. We thought it was very important for this to occur so that the lines of communication are open weekly, starting July first, and it could be more than weekly depending on what the developments are concerning both of the, these items, and so that has been signed, and that is the memorandum of understanding that we voted on. All right, next.
Sorry, item number three, budget amendments.
Motion to approve.
Second by Councilmember Bowman.
Item number four, mayor's budget recommendations for twenty-twenty through twenty-twenty-one.
This item is open?
Item is open. I know there were a couple of council members who had comments concerning some of the misinformation that was out there concerning. Councilmember Farrelletto?
Thank you very much for, for giving me the floor. First of all, I appreciate all of the residents, both in the Delaware District and throughout the city, that had contacted me up until just a few minutes ago and this week, expressing concern about the budget specifically relating to police and education. Also, I want to apologize to some of those residents because I, I told you in some of the emails that the information you were telling me couldn't be out there on social media, and it couldn't be publicized by credible sources because it was just so inaccurate. I thought that there were Russian bots putting stuff on social media, when in fact, there were organizations that were saying the, the City of Buffalo's proposed budget included a twenty-million-dollar increase to police funding. Now, the facts are, from last year's budget to this year's budget, there is a one-point-three-million-dollar reduction in the police budget. That includes all items related to police, that includes an increase in fringe benefits. In fact, the operational costs in the mayor's proposed budget are over four-million dollars less than the previous year. So just to be unequivocally clear, there is not a twenty-million-dollar increase. We are not voting on that, nor was that ever proposed. What was proposed is a one-point-three-million-dollar reduction, including, and that includes the fringe benefits. Also, it was shared that the City of Buffalo is cutting thirty-one million dollars to education. There is absolutely no truth to this. There was never a proposal to do that. In fact, the council cannot reduce the amount of funding that we give the Board of Ed from the prior year. So I understand why so many people were upset because they thought the police were taking money from education, giving it to police, and it's very unfortunate that that information was being spread out by what individuals thought were credible sources or organizations. So I just want to put that out there, and I also want to say, in a lot of the emails I received and the phone calls, there were a lot of good points that people brought up. People had concerns about different things relating to police, talking about community policing, training, things that this council has advocated for in the past, and in fact, in past budgets, we have included funding specifically for these efforts. So I just want to let everyone know that we're, we're listening to you. We will work together, and just to be clear, the information about education being cut and increases is unequivocally false, and I hope the people that were spreading that misinformation clear it up as vociferously as they put it out. Thank you.
Councilmember Rivera?
Thank you very much, Mr. Chairman. Before I get into the budget, there's some underlying things that have happened that have caused the tension that has brought this issue front and forward, and that is the, that race continues to be a, a problem with regards to the African-American community and law enforcement. That is evident by the events that have happened. I think we all agree and we all understand that, and we can take measures, practical measures, to deal with some of the systemic problems that are occurring, not only in the national level, perhaps in the local level, and we can have that constructive conversations going forward. Whether a police department has a large budget or small budget, whether it's a town, whether it's a city, really doesn't matter, because the problem is not really on the size of the police department. It's normally of some bad police officers that make mistakes. So it could happen in a budget of five-hundred-and-nineteen million dollars, it could happen in a budget of twenty million dollars. We have to deal with the systemic problems, and that's what we commit ourselves to working with groups that have practical solutions that we can work with the Buffalo Police Department. We'll continue to do that, and I believe we made some progress on that front through the police oversight, through the initiatives that we have taken, working with the administration, working with law enforcement, working with our, our, our local law enforcement. So we work to continue to develop, grow the professionalism of every department within the City of Buffalo, and we commit ourselves to having that conversation going forward. This problem will go away after this budget is approved, but the systemic problems are still there, and we have to deal with them, and I think we all understand based on a series of events that race continues to be a factor when it comes to the African-American community and community of color, and we have to deal with that, and we commit, at least I commit myself, and I imagine many of the council members here feel the same as well. Now regarding the information, the misinformation that was out there, I agree, my staff spent numerous days and hours answering calls, returning emails to this morning. Yesterday on Zoom, we met with a group, and we explained to them that their information was misleading. At one-thirty-six this morning, they put out a correction at a time where nobody can respond. The hundreds of people that have been flooding our office don't have. So who's going to repair and fix all of the misinformation that was put out there? This organization needs to be held accountable. And I, I, I know there's funders, and I know there's foundations that we should hold organizations accountable when they put misinformation out there. My staff has worked hard returning calls. I want them to reach back to each one, as Councilmember Farrelletto mentioned. They should reach each one of those people that have flooded our office and let them know that the information they put out, and they now recognize was misleading and not accurate, let them know that it wasn't accurate. We'll commit to continue to work to deal with the systemic problems. But the information is so important. Going forward, if you provide misinformation, it is going to be very difficult for us to trust you on anything you bring before us. It's hard for me, and I'm an advocate for many of the issues that they feel strongly about, but when you put misinformation out there, bad information, it's hard for us to trust you going forward. So you have to repair the damage that you have made by putting this misinformation out there. And, and I just, we talked about, and the facts are the facts. The numbers are the numbers. Farrelletto mentioned the numbers. We have them here. We have decreased our budget by three-point-six-million dollars. The police department operation budget has steadily decreased by six-point-six percent for the last years. The claim that thirty-million dollars being added to the police department budget for, for police is categorically false. There are no funds provided in this budget to purchase equipment to militarize the Buffalo Police Department. That is false as well. These are the facts that we're talking about. These are the real numbers that we have. And so I think that you need to correct the misinformation that you put out there to develop the credibility that you have developed over the many years. Many of the concerns you have are valid, and I agree with many of the concerns you have. But the numbers are the numbers, and numbers don't lie, and that's what I just wanted to impress upon this organization that is putting this information out there, that corrected it at the very last minute. And I was still getting calls this morning in my office from people that are basing their assumptions on the misinformation that was given to us. Thank you very much, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, sir. Councilmember Wingo?
Thank you, Mr. Chair, but I do believe, just to be fair, that a few of my colleagues were before me. Just to be fair, I don't know which one wants to go next, but if anyone, if you don't, if you don't.
Councilmember Wingo, you had the floor.
Okay, thank you. Just to echo the sentiments of, of my colleagues who have spoken already, we, we have heard the, the community, and we do understand the concerns. There are underlying issues, as Councilmember Rivera had said, that is fueling the anger and the angst of the community that is calling for the defunding of the police department. Now, if you ask me personally, am I upset at some of the things that have transpired in the City of Buffalo regarding innocent folks, well, unarmed black people who have been abused? Yes, I'm concerned about that. These things need to be addressed, but I don't personally believe defunding the police is the answer. I personally don't believe that. What I do believe is the legislation that is already available right now for us to support, to show our support for, including the New York State Civil Rights Law, section fifty-eight. That law specifically protects officers, corrections officers, firefighters, their disciplinary personnel files from being used in court when an attorney is trying to prove a case of abuse to a constituent who has been beat up by police. That record is unavailable to show that that officer has a history of violence towards black people or people of color. I'm particularly talking about black folks now because we need to show our support to repeal fifty-eight, section fifty-eight of the New York State Civil Rights Law. Now, I've already written a resolution. It's going to be going before the council on Tuesday next week. I'm hopeful that all of my colleagues are in support of that, but that's one of the things that I believe will curtail a lot of the issues that we're dealing with. If officers are being held accountable, we would not have this call for defunding the police department. If officers would do the right thing, those who are not doing the right thing would do the right thing, we wouldn't have this call to, to defund the police department. Also, we're currently drafting a resolution right now as relates to the, to, to, Eight Can't Wait, and that's by DeRay McKesson. Eight Can't Wait, and one of those reforms, it specifically speaks to intervention of other police officers. If we were to have a policy in our department that would allow police officers to intervene when another police officer is abusing someone, I don't believe we would have the call to defund the police department because officers will be checking their partners, officers will be checking each other. We need to make sure that when this resolution comes forward again, Eight Can't Wait in the City of Buffalo, that we ensure, even though we may have six to seven, I mean, five to six out of the eight planks already, and also Buffalo is the model city for some of those reforms, but if we should include all eight of those reforms and policies, I personally don't believe we would have this call for defunding the police department, and I want to make sure that I hear you, community, your Maston Councilmember hears you, and we are putting forward the resolutions that show our support for these reforms and police departments. All is, all it takes, and this is not a huge lift, all it takes is the Commissioner of the Police Department, all it takes is the mayor of the City of Buffalo to say, our policy will now be this, 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 and this, and there we have it, eight reforms that will ensure that our abuse allegations decline dramatically. And with that, Mr. Chair, regarding the information that was put out there, again, I'm hopeful that this meeting will be suffice enough for the folks to understand and to see that the police department's budget has been decreased, and that we are looking forward to ensuring that the City of Buffalo is safe, how, with how we move forward with the budget. Thank you, Mr. Chair. I'm done.
Your Councilmember Gullumbeck?
Thank you, Mr. President. I want to echo the sentiments of my colleagues. When I first received the emails in my office, I read and I thought, I said, Jesus, is this the same budget that I had looked at? Because I had thought that the police budget was actually cut slightly this year, as it has been over the past several years. I, you know, started doing some digging. I contacted a couple of the people that had emailed me, and unfortunately, you know, some of them, it was very confrontational. It's not the idea of working together, but it's the, you know, the yelling and the screaming, and to be honest with you, the yelling and the screaming goes away. And the reality is, is that we're going to have to do things like Mr. Wingo just spoke about, you know, taking a look at seriously reforming issues in the police department, whether it's from the local level or higher up. And a lot of the things really have to come from Albany. But I want to say a couple of things. Number one, I will not vote to slash the police budget because I think that people are missing out on a whole bunch of ideas. We need more training for our police officers. We need more training than just the academy that these officers go through. We need psychological evaluations on a regular basis for these officers for their own safety and for the safety of everyone else. It's a very, very difficult job, and people know that I've generally been a supporter of the police department, but it is a very difficult job. I watched some of the protests that were going on over the weekend, and I want to say that, you know, the overwhelming majority, actually, all of the officers that I saw were very restrained. You know, people were screaming, hollering, getting into their faces, and it's a very, very difficult job, and you need officers that are going to be able to control themselves. I'm glad that the officers didn't comport themselves the way that some of the protesters did, and I'm not the, the unpeaceful protesters. I want to say that I will continue to work with Mayor Brown, with Commissioner Lockwood, and work from within to fix the problems in the police department. And the problem is, is that as long as you have human beings that are running an institution, there will always be bad apples. There will always be problems, and how do you weed those problems out? Well, cutting the funding, getting rid of programs that assist the police officers, that train the police officers, is not the direction to go into. That's not going to be popular with some of the people, but those are the same people that it won't be popular with. Those are the same people that are, you know, refusing to believe that the twenty-million-dollar number was inaccurate. And to be honest with you, it doesn't matter whether it was twenty million or thirty thousand dollars. There's going to be a core group of people that are going to, that are going to argue and yell and scream and place all of the problems of the world at the feet of the police department, and that's not true. Some of the problems, absolutely. Do we realize that? Yes, we do. But we need to move forward. I think that it's imperative that the police department, once again, get the funding so that there can be training. I think there should be more training. I wish that there was more funding so that we could do more training right now. I wish that there was more funding so that we could do more comprehensive psychological evaluations right now. Cutting the police budget is not the right way to go drastically cutting the police budget. Now, that being said, I also agree with many of the points that the people who sent emails to me, the rational people, made. You know, we do need to continue funding social programs. There do need to be programs. With the coronavirus in effect this year, I am very, very nervous about this summer. I work very closely, as do I believe all of my colleagues, with our little leagues, with our youth programs in our districts. And as of right now, there's no Little League baseball being set up for this summer. I've been in touch with Little League football, and they're still up in the air. Their season starts a little bit later. I've been in touch with Willie Hutch Jones, who runs some programs in my parks. I've been in touch, well, I have been in touch with the Riverside Library and some of the other organizations that do arts programs and things like that, Town Boys and Girls Club, Northwest Buffalo Community Center. And with this coronavirus, I'm not sure what programs are going to be available this year, and that scares me. I want there to be more programs for youth. I want there to be more opportunities for the young men and the young women to get off of the street and to do something productive. I want it to be in the arts. I want it to be in sports. I want it to be in intellectual. So, you know, I just want to go on the record that I believe that, you know, sensible people can sit down and come up with good solutions. I think that it's very, very important that rather than dividing residents in the City of Buffalo, that we work together towards a common good. I can support the Buffalo Police Department and the overwhelming number of good officers, and I can believe that Black Lives Matter at the same time. I can support funding for the police department. I can support training for the police department at the same time that I can support arts and youth and social programming. And don't trust the people that came up with that twenty-million-dollar number, but take a look at each and every one of our council manic districts and take a look at what we've supported and where we have supported, and I think you'll see that we have a very, very strong record on trying to support programs in our districts, a wide variety of programs that assist all of our constituents. I'm glad to also that we're going to be working with the administration on the, ultimately on the budget reductions, additions, whatever, after July the first. And I know that there's been some glitches with the council over the past month or so. This has been very new to us. There's been some communication problems with council members and so on. I think that, and I'm hoping that those glitches will be ironed out so that not only there will be communication between the administration and the leadership, but that there would also be communication between the leadership and the council members. Thank you.
Was there another councilman, Councilmember Nowakowski?
Thank you, Mr. President. I want to speak in totality of the budget. The first I want to say is, thank you to the Controller and all of the auditors in the Department of Control and Commissioner Estrich. I last week had hours worth of meetings where they addressed every single question and sticky I could possibly come up with and have, and to make sure that I knew everything before this vote, and anything from deficit borrowing, from a deficit bond turning into a note, to revenues, to rainy day funds, to interest rates, to how we will pay this back in, in the future. They really sat down with me and worked with me, and I really came to the conclusion that this budget is not the Bible. This budget is a living, breathing document that we will have to amend month by month since we are in such turbulent times. There is an amendment to this budget that I overwhelmingly support and that this council overwhelmingly supports, and that's the reduction of two-point-two-million dollars in traffic fees and fines because oftentimes, fees and fines disproportionately hurt struggling communities and people, and we do not want, this council does not want to rely on revenues on the backs of working families in the poor. And I'm really, really appreciative of this amendment. And I agree with a lot of my colleagues. There were, I got hundreds of emails from my constituents that I've been replying to well into, through the night, and they do bring out really awesome points. They want to see, they want to see their neighborhoods and their people built up. They want to see that this city invests in its people and the return of investments in its people and not in profit, and I see you and we see you, and as we move forward and as the cities evolves, we will be continuing to have these conversations. Thank you, Mr. President.
Any other colleague? All right, before, I'm sorry, Councilmember Bowman?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I just wanted to take a second to acknowledge as well, as many of my colleagues have said, the emails that we received, and I do acknowledge that there is systemic and underlying issues, and I commit myself to being open to discussion and being a part of the solution. This budget was extremely tough for me. I think the leadership, the council leadership for these amendments yesterday, where it allows us to stay in the discussion to have input. Mitch and I were both on those calls with the Controller, with Donna Estrich, Commissioner Estrich, and there was a lot of back and forth, and my unease was definitely with the unknown of the federal funding coming in. We don't know how much we'll get. Then the Plan B is deficit borrowing, which I struggle with adding that liability. We could take on potentially fifteen to twenty-four million this year, and then we don't know what we're looking at for next year, but I appreciate leadership getting us at the table. We'll have input with these new amendments, and that's why I'm in support. Thank you.
Thank you, councilmembers. Councilmember Wyatt? Thank you, Mr. President. I'm in agreement with a lot of things that my colleagues said, especially Councilmember Wingo as it pertains to some of the interactions with police and African-Americans. I know a couple of days ago in the University District in Maston, we had some tremendous challenges with protesters, and as I talked to some of the seniors and their difficulties in dealing with this and their nervousness. This is a unfortunate time in our country. It's a fortunate time in our city, and for us to have conversations about cutting police probably isn't the right time for us to have that conversation, and for us to get misinformation is not good as well. However, it is also not good to not get any information. We've talked about misinformation, but not the fact of not information. Yesterday, we were looking, I was looking forward to hearing from the Control Board on what actions the administration is taking on addressing the sixty-five-million dollars. Unfortunately, we were told that that meeting was canceled. That, to me, set us, sent a clear message. The Control Board has information about the administration's plans, but the council members don't. How does that speak to our responsibilities as elected officials and fiduciaries over the city's budget? Not to get information, a meeting to be canceled when we have a sixty-five-million-dollar hole that we have no answer to or where, where the money's coming from, or if it's going to come. And even today, as we sit and decide on this budget, we still don't have the information. And I'm just aghast that we will be talking about misinformation when the fact is, there's a lot of information we don't have. And so to move forward on a budget that we don't have that information seems to me very foolish, because what are the options? Now, some of the things that I've heard about deficit borrowing, and we know that over the last three years, the city has taken it on average, as far as revenue, four-hundred-and-seventy-five million, not five-hundred-million, not five-hundred-five-million, not even five-hundred-and-nineteen-million has been proposed, four-hundred-and-seventy-five-million. So when you talk about investing, when you talk about training, So when you talk about investing, when you talk about training, when you talk about mortgaging our future on some deficit borrowing, that's the decision today. And so some of you are going to make a decision on prolonging this problem instead of fixing the problem. However, I'm one councilmember. I'm not a genius. I think I'm kind of slow. Um, but as I learn things and I understand the importance of precious resources to our communities. So when we borrow this money, if we have to borrow, the federal government doesn't come through, then a district like mine that struggles, that doesn't get the investment that other districts get, is going to struggle even more. And that's where my problem comes in. When the resources that I need for my community are not made available because we've mortgaged our future to somewhere that we don't even know where we're going. When I need sidewalks, when I can use infrastructure, uh, uh, changes for Bailey Avenue to increase um, new small businesses for African Americans who want to start their own business, when I have, I'm limited to those things and I can't deliver to my constituents, that's where my problem comes in. I don't have a problem with the mayor and his decision on his leadership and about the budget, but I do have a budget, a problem when that money and that, those decisions affect the people that I represent. And I fight very hard. I fight very hard for my people. I go in for my people because that's what they expect from me. So if I sit here and vote on a budget that I don't know what the outcomes are going to be, where there's no clear guidance, where Councilmember, uh, Freire, um, Councilmember Galumbek says uh, sensible people can come up with good solutions. I totally agree, but we have not been sensible. We have not gotten the information because every time we look for this information, we've been stonewalled. And I, I can appreciate my colleagues who have gone and dug, and dug the deep, uh, dives to get the information. However, that information should be presented to all of us. We are all on the same team. We are all trying to deliver for our constituents. But for us not to have this information at this hour when we're making a decision is unconscionable. So with that being said, I've said my piece. I hope that there was, there's some revelation. I pray that the federal government will deliver those funds because I know my district, one of the poorest districts in the city, can use every single dollar. And to think about investing or putting fifty-two million dollar debt on the backs of our future, when we don't know, when we, like, like I said, we've only averaged four hundred and seventy-five million. Our revenues are slow, and they're probably going to be slower because one of the things that we're not really taking into consideration, just like we didn't know that this pandemic is coming on, that there may be a pandemic in the fall or in the winter. So what are we doing for that? Take another, we're going to borrow some more money? It is unconscionable, and I don't know what the situation is with the Control Board and how we didn't get information, but I'm very disappointed because from what it looks like right now, we might be going down a path that we don't want to go down. And the people who could possibly help us have given us turned their back on us as far as I'm concerned. So thank you very much, Control Board, because I'm totally disappointed that we were looking for answers to help us make a sound decision. We want to make sure we're not in a charred Control Board. I don't want to be sitting in a council that a Control Board is making decisions for me and for the people that I represent. That's not what I was elected to do, but it may be a reality. But again, I'm one person. That's my piece. And I hope that we all have a great day and that the federal, federal, um, uh, body will help us in making certain that our people don't fall through the cracks. And the people who I represent that are the most vulnerable with all these situations going on, the most vulnerable, the, the coronavirus hit my district harder and Councilmember Wingo's district harder than any other district, one, four, two, one, five. Every single resource that we can get for our people, we need. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. Uh, thank you for, uh, all of the comment. Thank you for those who, uh, called, um, the office. I, uh, tried to answer as many calls as I could, and in most of those conversations when we were done, and I did explain that the numbers that were out there, and that was, there were two things that we were basically asked to do in the beginning. One, uh, from organized groups, and we heard them, uh, when they asked us to reduce, uh, the line for traffic violations. That was done. Um, maybe not acknowledged, but it was done by over two million dollars to reduce that down. Just recently, we're hearing, uh, defund the police, and I'll, I'll just simply end with this. I stand with those flat-footed stand because I am those, uh, who feel that our police, that police departments across the country need change. And this is not talk. I've laid it out. Maybe some will say that they, we're not doing anything, have not seen the posts, they have not listened to these budget hearings that have been as transparent as possible because we are broadcasting for probably the first time to Facebook. We have had every single meeting to the public. I have not participated in one session with more than one council member that I did not put public. I did read one comment that said, you know, the city of Buffalo wasn't one that, um, allow public comment. It's not true. We asked people to email us, call us, gave them an email number weeks ago. Gave them an email number, uh, email address, gave them a phone number, read every comment during the budget hearings that was made publicly, and then responded. It is now the hour to vote, and we are, and the person who put it out there even admitted that their numbers were wrong. One young lady that I talked to yesterday, and I enjoyed talking to everybody who I could get to, um, who didn't live in the city of Buffalo, and who said, reduce the police line. And I said, which line? Because the first line that we were asked to reduce, we did. And she said, I don't know. I was just told to call, and I was told to be on tomorrow. I do not believe that because there are some police who are wrong, that you penalize communities from having protection. I haven't heard people say they didn't want protection. They don't want bad police officers. Police are saying, we need more training, and if they need more training, they should have the training. But the training to de-escalate, the training to, uh, be culturally sensitive, that training, I support. I also support any laws that would help a police officer who helps people. Some of this is not city legislation. Some of this goes to the state. And the education of that is very important. It is our responsibility and duty. But we're not just giving lip service, and I'll go through a few things and then, uh, move, uh, toward the vote if there's nothing else. We did reinstate the police oversight. Some would say that's not enough, but it was asked for, and we did it. It is not made up of anybody elected. It is citizens. They have been out in the community. And now it is time to take that data and to take that information and to come back now, not, not tomorrow, like now, and to make decisions about policy, to make decisions about laws. And that won't happen if we just have a volunteer force. Um, and so I have committed from my own discretionary funds, uh, to help to fund a position that would work with the police oversight, with the community, to then come back and work with the council so that we all work together. But I'll be clear. Some people talk about they want to work together, and I've said I'm available to sit down. I'm available to talk. And so many people say, we want to, we want to make this work, won't respond back. And so I've reached out. I want to be clear. I've reached out to several groups and said, if you want to talk about it, let's talk, but I want to do more than talk. I want to do legislation, policies, and procedures because at the end of the day, that's what it's about for us. We are lawmakers, and I'm willing and going to do it regardless of people talk or not, or talk to me, uh, talk with us, talk with the council. So we do support that training. I think Councilmember Wyatt has talked about this a lot. We all have, and it's time to move, uh, that forward. Um, we'll support that. Um, we, we did hear the community when we heard them say, we want body cams. We got the body cams. We did hear the community when they said, we want less lethal force and guns, and this council has pushed. Um, and now it has to be funded. So some of the funding lines where people say it's militarization, it's actually trying to demilitarize so that those community police officers out there are not seen, those who are working hard are not seen as being a part of the problem. This is why I cannot vote to defund. The reason is, over a year, I think it's been two years ago, I had the unfortunate task of burying a grandmother and her grandchild who was shot in the fruit belt. I buried them both, as I have buried many who have been murdered. When I went to that scene the next morning, there were four detectives in the grass looking for any fragment of a bullet to be able to bring to justice whoever murdered that grandmother and that baby. One of the detectives came up to me, a white detective with tears in his eyes and said to my face, I'm going to work day and night to catch whoever did that. I can't have less people to do that because in this neighborhood and other neighborhoods, they're saying we want good police officers, trained police officers, police officers that care about us, not police officers that stand on necks with their hands in their pockets, not police officers that beat people on camera after they are already in handcuffs. That's not what we want, and I stand with that. But I also stand with the senior down the street who may need, or somebody who is being held hostage, that will need a responsible police officer to respond. For that, I can't defund it. I, I, I can though, and willing, and have said solid things that may not be referred to again by other people because the thought is, it's just talk. Well, check the record because it's all on the record of what we have accomplished and what we are willing to accomplish. Um, with that being said, any other comments before we move to the vote? Councilmember Rivera?
Chairman, um, just on the budget, um, I think that this is probably one of the most difficult budgets that I've worked on, and I think, uh, the council members that are here now have worked on in the last twelve years that I've been on the Common Council. Uh, back before the pandemic, there was a shortfall, a projected shortfall of five million dollars. During the pandemic, it went up to fifteen million dollars. Uh, our solution, the budget recommendation was not to cut, to keep the taxes steady, both residential, commercial taxes steady, not to lay off anybody's, not to cut any services. That was the administration's decision. That was the budget they sent to us. Uh, at the same time, uh, the county had a shortfall of two hundred million dollars, uh, in sales tax and hotel taxes. They dealt with it differently than we did. He proposed a thirteen point one percent cut across the board for everyone. That is how they dealt with it on the county side. So I share some concerns. I don't want people to think we're just going to rubber stamp a budget and not have concerns. Yes, I believe every council member that's here has legitimate concerns regarding this budget. Um, the fact that we're depending and relying on sixty-five million dollars and ten million, twelve million dollars in casino money and other unreliable sources of funding that we're basing our budget and projections on. Uh, that's what's going to create this shortfall. Somewhere in the near future, this common council is going to have to deal with that shortfall. We're going to have to make some tough decisions. We're not making them now. We need to operate the city. We need to borrow. But sometime in the near future, as Councilmember Mitch Noakowski mentioned, this is a living document, breathing, living document that can be changed and amended and adjusted. We're going to have to do this. I'm going to vote today on behalf of this budget, knowing full well that if we don't get this sixty-five million dollars, we don't get the twelve million dollars, and the projections don't come in, and the shortfall continues, tough decisions are going to be, uh, are going to be made. And I give Councilmember, uh, Rashid Wyatt a lot of credit. He has spent time working on this budget, learning this budget. The new council members, Mitch, uh, uh, Noakowski and Brian Bowman, sitting down and learning their first budget. This is their first budget, and they wanted to make the right decision going forward. And I certainly, um, they have a long future, and I want to make sure that their future is better than our future. When we leave, I want to make sure that this city is better off than what it is right now. So we're going to be making tough decisions. Should they have looked at, at, at cuts across the board? Uh, hindsight is twenty-twenty. We'll bet, look back and we'll say, we should have done it, but we didn't do it. But in the meantime, we have to operate the city. We have to borrow money. We have to do the responsible thing, vote up and down on this budget. Uh, we commit to working with the administration, uh, as soon as possible. I only wish that there was more communication between the administration and us. Councilmembers said, we don't have information. Yeah, you don't have information. Guess what? The administration didn't give us the information. We know less than you do today. Why didn't you call us? Why didn't leadership call us? Uh, you, I don't believe that the administration, we didn't, we didn't even meet with the administration because of, uh, our meetings were virtual or there were teleconference, but there was never any talk with the administration about contingencies. So there was nothing for me to go back to the council members' leadership and say, by the way, this is what the administration is proposing because they really didn't, um, share that information with us. Perhaps they had their reasons. I don't know. But they didn't share it with us, and since they didn't share it with us, we couldn't share it with you. But I commit to working with every single council member. Work with the administration because we're all in this together, and we have to make good decisions going forward. So, and as Councilmember, uh, Wyatt mentioned, we are hopeful that this money comes through from the federal government on behalf of all the residents of the city of Buffalo. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you for all of the comments. Um, and I believe we're ready for the
Question. Uh, yeah, yes, sir. Not yet. Mr. Chair?
Yeah, the floor.
It, it is, it is, it is beyond me. And, and I really want us to get to the vote, but I'm going to say my piece before the vote because I'm going to abstain from the vote because of the lack of information and inclusion and transparency. Now, we delayed voting on this. I was ready to vote two weeks ago. I was ready to vote two weeks ago. Since then, there's been more confusion and misinformation on this budget than I've experienced in my five years as a council member. So I am not going to vote on this budget. I will be abstaining. I have heard the people, and I am going to vote the way my constituents are asking me to vote. I will not defund the police department. I'm abstaining from this vote because how can we sit here and say that we are culpable? That we've voted on this budget every year and then do the same thing again this year? Therefore, before the vote even happens, I don't want anyone to think, because I'm at the end of the vote, beginning of the vote, I'm going to abstain from this vote.
All right, then that means that you will be counted in the negative. Um, and that's fine. Um, we're going to move toward the vote if there are no other comments. Um, I will say that, um, uh, thank you to everyone for being involved and continuing to be involved uh, in this budget. At the end of the day, um, I am going to vote because it is my job to make a decision. Um, and, um, making no decision is making a decision. Um, Councilmember, uh, Rivera, the call?
Motion is to approve.
Thinking by Councilmember Freire Leto, roll call.
Sorry, um, Council President Majority Leader is approve as amended.
Motion to approve as amended.
She stands with the correction. Roll call.
Councilmember Bowman?
Until this very moment, I'm conflicted. It's a no for me.
Councilmember Freire Leto?
Yes.
Councilmember Galumbek?
Yes.
Councilmember Noakowski?
Yes.
Council President Pritchett?
Yes.
Majority Leader Rivera?
Yes.
President Protem Scalen?
You are me.
Yes.
Councilmember Wingo?
Okay, um, since I don't want my intention to be confused at all whatsoever, uh, I did say I was going to abstain from the vote, but because I don't want my intention to be confused, my vote is no.
Next question.
Councilmember Wyatt?
No.
The budget has passed approve as amended.
Thank you, councilmembers, and don't forget we have the MOU that will continue Thank you, councilmembers. And don't forget, we have the MOU that will continue to meet with the administration if the money has not been received. Thank you. Next item?
Adjournment. Item number five, adjournment.
Taken by Councilmember Rashid Wyatt. First by Councilmember Rivera. Thank you.
Motion to receive and file. Thank you.
Thank you. We are adjourned.